Thank you for waiting. I apologize.
Okay. This is the February twenty-second City Council Work Session. Doug, Doug Lambry and Patty Leitner and Robert Lanier are absent. Okay. So I'll give you an update on the winter storm. The Instant Command, that's the first time I've worked with them. They were amazing. We had some issues. We had to, when we activated the command team, Andrea had some staffing issues. Her and Derek ran for ninety-six hours straight. There was no, no volunteers with staff. So I, we're gonna discuss that, okay? We housed nine-one-one and the public work staff at the hotel so that we would be staffed for all of that. So we will have some bills to pay for that. Our cleaning, the city is responsible for the parking lot across the street. We are not responsible for the hotel and the conference center parking lot. So I had to scrape the whole, or the parking lot across the street. I had to have the senior center pay, cleaned off for COVID shots. And so we'll be having some unexpected bills to pay. But our finances right now are good. So the nice thing is, the governor did give Adam like a hundred K. So I have an email into our Adam rep to see if any of it could be recouped, at least for the nine-one-one, housing of the nine-one-one. So Ginger did give us a break. I think the rooms were like sixty-five dollars a night, didn't they? So, but they were there for a week. You know, we kicked them out on Friday morning because Ginger had to get ready for the conference. But they were there. They, some of them came in Saturday night and some of them came in Sunday night. So, but it did keep us staffed up. IRV had some issues with their sprinkler system. We had to move six residents to the hotel due to the sprinkler system failure. And they took a CNA with them and they stayed there for three nights. And they are back at IRV right now. I think that was the, the highlight of it. Public Works done an awesome job. They did not realize they needed to clean Village Place going through the main road here. So when we have our debrief tomorrow, I'll make sure that they understand that you need to clean that main road. Do you guys have anything for Instant Command debrief tomorrow that jumps out at you that we should address?
Well, I thought they did, but you get a job because I've never seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
I've gone my way up and down. It was a good call.
Yeah, yeah, they've done a great job. I do have, I'm, when Doug gets back, Doug's person is having some surgery. He's gonna be out for about four or five weeks. But when he gets back, I'm, I need to talk to him about the chain of command for Instant Command. I know Robert is my public information officer. My concern is if, who else is, you know, Doug took the lead because he's the Instant Command Officer. We need to find out who else has had that training and who thinks they're in. If, if something like that happened and he's not here. Because I tell you, I learned a lot from him. I mean, I, I could do it now, but, and I am gonna sign myself up for some of the things that are crazy. But we just need a, a good chain of command or if he's not here, who can do what. So, and I think we have that with Donnie Hobbit some and with Robert Hadley. I'm just not sure that they could do as good a job as Doug did more. But, and so that's all I have on the winter storm issue for right now.
The only thing that I, that I'll just go out there is that I was confused as to what my response would be. I was getting the text messages with updates from Doug and talking about meetings that were detailed. But I didn't get the first meeting. So he said, "The meet, for those of you that attended the meeting, be there."
Yeah.
And so I'm going, "Well, maybe I should be there, but I wasn't included in the first meeting."
And that's my, Doug goes, that's my, and I mean, Doug and I both should apologize. He wasn't sure if I kept you as my, as my public information officer. And I did, and he goes, "Oh, well." So that's why you got added into the tag.
I got added into the tag. But I didn't know whether I needed to be at those meetings or not because I didn't,
Well, we really-
I didn't get included in the first one. So I'm thinking, "Well, maybe just including me so I'm aware in case there's something that needs to be..."
Right. And, and you should have probably been at that first one. We did rein Mr. Byard in and told him that there was one specific way that we could get information out to the people. And that was either by Doug doing it or by Robert doing it. And Doug went ahead and done it, so Robert didn't have to. Now, what he put out in addition to that was fine, but we made it very clear to him that when the Instant Command Team is activated, that we have control over what goes out to the public as far as information that we need to get out. So, and I think he does pretty well.
Oh, yeah. Is there, is any of this in, in written form so in case, you know, none of us are here, that future people would know who's, who shares on this, who's the backup?
Yes, the Instant Command Team actually is-
They have a manual somewhere?
They have a man, or, or a manual of who is. And Robert didn't get invited because Doug had never asked him. He actually come and picked me up that first meeting. And so when he was in the car, he goes, "I need to ask you that." And it was, so he, Doug has a whole binder of what, who is what.
Is that the only one that exists?
As far as I know, yes.
Maybe we should have a copy of this to the, to the house?
As far as I know, that's the only one that exists, is the one that Doug has. So that's a good point. So all will-
Either that or do it digitally someplace somehow.
I will, like I said, Doug's out having surgery and he'll be out of pocket for four or five weeks. So, but that's a good point. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the zoning, short-term rental issue. We have not had a meeting. It, it's scheduled for this Wednesday at eleven AM. I will let you know that I had a long conversation with AJ after our last City Council meeting. And we're probably gonna go with some type, it's already in our ordinance, a special use permit. So we probably will go with some type of a special use permit that's dedicated just for short-term rental. And we've had some feedback from rent, the Realtors. And we've had some feedback from an owner that actually owns a unit that he uses for short-term rental. And he actually gave a very good description of things that some other cities do. So I think together we can come up with something, you know, and get it put together. And then we can work, AJ can work on any ordinance changes that we need to make.
What we need to keep in mind is, the short-term rental only applies to properties and zones that are R1, A or B.
Right.
Has nothing to do with anything that's owned in condos, penthouse, duplexes.
Oh, yeah.
Any of that other zoning, it doesn't apply.
Yeah, all we're gonna work on is R1, A and R1B. So-
If somebody applies for a special permit, is, who makes that decision?
So right now, the special use permit, they have to go- Right, it goes to planning and zoning. Well, they have to get permission from their surrounding neighbor. It goes, it goes to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning gives a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, let me add something. Now, okay, let's say I want to get one. Then I need to go to my neighbor?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And how far, free housing or?
Well, that's what we-
We need to talk about that. There's one, in one place, they talked about, in the planning, in the ordinance, in one spot, talking about special use permits. They talked about doing something two-hundred feet. But I think what we did for the, the animal, the, the chicken coop-
Yeah.
For those three-rained chicken coops, we did like two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Well, I think we can establish the amount of feet away in a radius. And if you look at a radius, and I've been, I, I went on Google Maps and did a radius of two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the center of the house. And you'll get, generally speaking, you get two houses away around it. So, and when we did the ordinance for the gas wells, it was five-hundred. Yeah, down under that.
Yeah.
So we've got some, we've got some guidelines there that we can probably look at. But it would need to be in a radius of so many feet from that house.
Yeah.
Catches everybody in front and back, neither side.
Right, right. And the other thing that, that we need to discuss or this group is, and maybe the ordinance takes care of it. AJ can probably let me know that. If someone in that two-hundred, if we do two-hundred-and-fifty, someone in that two-hundred-and-fifty doesn't sign their permit, does that automatically would say they can't have it? Or, I mean, because two-hundred-and-fifty feet radius could be six homes. Well, maybe out, out of, six homes, five people sign up, but one doesn't. So do we need a parameter, I mean, do we need some guidelines in there that say?
Five out of six or something like that?
Probably, probably, I mean, a party's gonna go to, depends on how P and D wants to handle it.
Right.
Because they're gonna be the first slice.
Right.
And you know, they have public hearing, it'd be people coming protest. That's a pretty powerful statement.
Right.
But in my mind, what's probably gonna happen, and I could be wrong, the first time around, no one's gonna say anything. And then if it's a party house and there's noise problems and da-da-da-da-da, the next time you come back to your SEP or SBE or SEP, then, then the neighbors will say, "This has been a problem, they don't follow the rules and that's why we're objected." And I think that's a much harder case.
Yes, yes. And Robert and I have kinda talked too. I think that if there's any police action that happened at that house, then that's another reason for planning and zoning to say, "No." Like if there was three or four police calls to that house, then when it goes, they come back into our renewal, you know, planning and zoning has that information, we make sure they have that information and say, "Well, you, you've had X number of issues at that house."
They need a time zone, I think. You know, if you say, "Okay, we're gonna put the permit this month, three months."
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. There needs to be some framework put in there for how long they couldn't apply. And, you know, Robert and I talked, especially you put it out for one year.
Standard.
Standard. And then they come back-
It needs to be redone and-
Right, and so, but ours now for chickens, if they come back and there's no issues, they're getting issues for up to three years.
Yeah.
So we're gonna say for, for short-term, it's gonna be yearly.
It's something smaller than that, something small.
Yeah, yeah. So, so Robert and I have a list of things that we're working on. Once we get, our committee comes together and makes the decision, then we'll bring it back to you guys. I will say that I'm not sure, I'm sure you guys have all seen the stuff that the resort went ahead and done. I'm not sure that that's legally binding.
I don't know.
No.
But it can, can be on them, depending on what the CNRs are and what the bylaws say, et cetera, et cetera. Could be binding on some, some people.
Yeah, yeah, so-
Well, it's, it's, and I've tried to look at and pull it off and read it. I mean, to make it a bylaw, the community club has two things. They've got covenants and restrictions. And they've got, they've got two sets of covenants and restrictions. One is covenants and strict, and then there's one that's a permit or something. Covering three, for like two, two documents. But the bylaws are all geared towards the way the club operates. Has nothing to do with CNRs. The change CNRs, that has to be a vote of the membership. And there is a certain number of votes you gotta have. And they gotta be by a certain percentage approved. And so the board unfortunately cannot change the CNRs just by themselves. Now, they can change the bylaws. But bylaws is about how the club operates. And this document that they wrote was talking about short-term rentals. And that's not how the club operates.
No, yeah.
And they're talking about rules and about if, you know, if you have a problem, you get fined. And the question's gonna be, "How are you going to find them?" And where, how are they gonna collect? And who's gonna write the ticket? And da-da-da-da, and who's gonna prosecute and all that?
Yeah.
They don't have any of that.
No, no.
And so, and they can't override the covenants and restrictions of a neighborhood. For example, Castle, Grand Isle has covenants and restrictions of that particular area. And they changed them several years ago to prohibit short-term rentals. They had to grandfather one property in, the rest of them are, can't do it. And so he can't override that in Grand Isle. Somebody can't go down there, they bought a house, they said, "Oh, well now, because the club says I can do it."
Yeah.
I can do it, but they can't. Same applies to condos. Some condos allow them, some don't.
Yeah.
Just because the community club says yes, they can't override the covenants.
And I don't think when David put that out there, he sparked that all.
He didn't, he told me he did.
Because now people are like, now people are like, "Well, the club says." And it's like, first of all, the club has nothing to do with zoning, nothing to do with zoning.
They're, they're not normally satisfied with it. They're even entities themselves, you know?
Right, right.
This community is completely different since we got here.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, what-
So the question I still have is, did they talk to their attorney first or not? So it sounds like they did not.
I think, I, I understood that Eddie Morgan, which is the guy that gave them the go-ahead, so that would indicate they must have gotten-
Eddie Morgan gave them the go-ahead to write their own?
That's my impression.
Well, I, the, the email that David sent out said that our attorney wrote me for it.
Yeah, he's saying that Eddie wrote them.
So I don't know who their attorney is. He said he, and I thought it was somebody, a rumor I heard was they claimed attorney. Eddie Morgan's the one with the attorney.
They've been, they've been using the Melody Valtrane for some of their stuff.
Who's she, did you, you like?
What?
I don't think I know.
Well, anyway, it's, it's, it's not a, I mean, as far as, as far as that document that went out and what the club put in for short-term rentals, has nothing to do with what we need to do for R1, A and the-
Well, it's like, they shouldn't know anything about zoning at all.
Yeah. Whatever, whatever they wanted to do, they thought it was okay to do.
Famous person once told me that you can't enforce a CNR.
Yeah, yeah.
What was, that you can't do what?
You can't really, a city cannot really enforce CNRs.
We, we could if we wanted to, but the whole, the whole point of us is that it's a self-enforcing thing by the people in the neighborhood. So I always said, you know, the city cannot override CNRs, for sure. I told them about the case, I won in the court. And here's no, you're not gonna, it's so long, it's just as part of my, you know, my-
So, so Robert and I will report back to you guys in Mark, the Mark City Council Work Session, where we're at on it and what the task force has come up with. And I'm hoping by then, we can at least have a really good rough draft, if not a solid draft. Because this is not gonna take long, in my opinion. It's, it's pretty much cut and dry from zoning. And here's, here's what it is, here's how we can adapt it. And there's not a whole lot of adaptations to do.
We need to kind of get something back on the road and-
Yeah.
It'd be great, to me, I think it'd be great if he would put out some information. Instead of just throwing it out, he should check, really, oh, call, talk to the mayor and say, "Mayor, I'm available."
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it's completely different, you know?
If he would've called the mayor before he put that original post out, I don't know if it would've happened.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Anyway, okay. So Entertainment District update. I had a real interesting conversation with Ginger and Deb. So they have hired an attorney to help them work through the ABC stuff to figure out, because, you know, they do the catering for the conference center and what kind of license they should get. Made no sense to me really why they went to the expense of hiring an attorney. It was pretty cut and dry in our ordinance, but whatever. Anyway, this attorney they hired actually worked with North Little Rock on establishing their entertainment district, especially their parking lot areas, because they had several open parking lot areas. So he has graciously agreed, when he's up here talking to Ginger and Deb, to meet with me and David and give us some suggestions on the parking lot. How North Little Rock, you've done your parking lot area. So that there wasn't a conflict with their entertainment district rule. So that meeting has not been set up or anything. I will tell you that I'm kind of leaning towards dropping an entertainment district just on the conference center and the hotel. As a separate entertainment, because we can drop as many as we want. If we drop it just on that, that way, if they're having a conference, someone's not gonna get in trouble if they walk from the hotel to the conference center with the great entertainment. Because that would be a, a separate entertainment district. If you look at Fort Smith, they have several. They have a Fort Taffey one, they have the downtown area, and they have another one also. I don't remember what the name of it is. But you, so you can drop as many as you want. I know that Melina really wants one drop on them, if the Corps will approve it. The entertainment district for the hotel and the conference center, would just allow them to go back and forth without getting in trouble. Because that's mutually owned by the same entity.
Would that be different than the shopping center here?
Yes, yes, so-
In other words, you could go back, go there, but you couldn't walk over to there.
Right. So it would be literally enclosed into their area, which would include the parking lot. Because their plans are, some of these conferences, like they have some entertainment in the future. And they plan on using that lower parking lot back there for possibly some bands. So, and that's why this gentleman, I think, got involved, because they knew it was a parking lot that they wanted to encompass into the area. So I'll be working with them. When I have something, I'll bring it forward with you guys for a test. But we'll probably drop four on just on that in a week.
So potentially, we could have three, if not four.
Yeah, yeah, you can have, a city can have as many as you want. And that might be one way to control our parking lot issue. That could encompass their parking lot because it's all part of that area. But they couldn't come across the street or go outside that parking lot. So, and that, I think, is where this attorney got involved, because of the parking lot issue.
You know, I guess I was trying to do on that stuff. But I, I thought the thing was that you could go to mom's, you get a drink, and you can walk out, walk down and walk over to the hotel.
Yes, that's the original purpose.
But here's the point, you're saying now you got, you can't cross the street, so I don't know.
You can't cross the street. The parking lots in our area are a problem. Because like a very adult of Lano's, and they wanna walk to the hotel.
But you get said before that, you could have one, or the conference center and, and the hotel.
Right, because they want, they want to start being able to do stuff. And Ramon and Harold, the doc and all the Lano's, are really game right now. I mean, they're not pushing for-
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying. I didn't know, like, if you walk across the street, whether you're in or not.
Yeah, yeah.
You can, it's part of the entertainment district. If it's not part of the entertainment district, you cannot.
That's what I was asking. And I think that, that what Linda is envisioning is that there could be overlapping districts. But there would be one permanent one that we don't have to worry about between the hotel and the conference center. And then for bigger things, a different district that overlaps that and includes it. But then you can, you know, cross over and do other things. But it's, because it's more confusing, because you're limiting access to cars that are parked on private property and public property. Sometimes, you know, you have to just think differently about, you know, we do one that's gonna be relatively easy between the hotel and the, I think we're, I think between the hotel and the conference center, I mean, joint, you know, joint management. It seems like it would be beneficial to them to have something that's relatively permanent and relatively simple, it's short. But you could have something that overlaps it, that you could cross the street during special events, not all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
Okay. It, it'll be confusing, but that's why they're getting an attorney.
Yeah, well, and I think they was worried about, they wanted to have that event in the parking lot. And Ginger knew that parking lots were an issue, so. But the parking lots I was talking about, it's like the one down here by the bowling alley, the one across the street from the hotel, all the parking here, you know, when there's an event, people park here sometimes. So that, that's the area that I need to understand better what we need to do, put in our ordinance. And how David can police that area, you know? So, so that's a wrap. Okay, you have an EMS vending request. So before we even talk about there, we need to talk about this incident that happened with this winter storm. So Andrea and Derek were on for ninety-six hours straight, because no one would come out and respond. I, I don't know, our only other option is to consider going to a paramedic service. They are, they have to, they're a paid service. Medic one has already approached the city about it through Doug. He would come and sign a contract today. And he would guarantee us one ambulance twenty-four-seven here in the bay with a staff. The other one that they have out on sixteen would be considered our backup. But they have to be out there because of a county agreement to cover the Shirley area and the one-ten area. So they have money in their money market to do this transfer. So here is the email that Andrea sent along with her request. "This is a court for ST2, the ambulance that has a blown engine. By doing this, we will not need to buy a new ambulance for over six years. This works, work comes with a brand-new engine and a full powertrain warranty. After work is completed, we can work on selling EMS one, which could get us up to twenty thousand dollars."
Is that the one they use for training, EMS one?
No, that's the one that-
The one that's permanently parked?
No, that's the one that they want to do this repair on.
It hasn't moved or?
It's already up there. She already had a code to get the estimate back. She did ask my approval for that, because they, that's the only way she could get an estimate. So they did have the money in their account, but I, I know I need approval from the City Council, so-
What they got, they've got two, they've got two gas-powered and then they got the diesel.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. One of the gas-powered ones has the blown engine. The other one is the newer one, and then you've got the diesel. That is, nobody likes to drive a diesel. So I think they're, I don't know what the numbers are, but I think the diesel is the one they wanted to do it.
So, they, I, I guess I'm a little confused. They have two that run all the time.
Run all the time.
And then there's one that they said-
They have the blown engine.
Yeah, that they were using for training for a vehicle that's parked. So they wanna repair that.
They wanna put a new engine in.
I got you, okay. Now, but, Doug, for your purposes, we talked about this two years ago in Budget Committee. And Robert brought up a very good point to lady and said, "Look, can you give us some estimate of how long you feel that you can answer?" Remember that conversation?
We had it, we had it this year with them.
Yeah, oh, did you? Okay, so I think, at that time, I remember it was, she said ten years and kind of like that. Is it really time for us? And would she go along with it if we said, "Hey, look, we need to do something, this, this incident." And so I'd be interested, did she say something about that?
Well, absolutely she did. At Instant Command, she made a comment that I, Derek and I are the emergency crew until the roads are good enough that my people feel safer. And she made that statement in the Instant Command meeting. My, here's, here's where my concern is. First of all, they should have a crew of three, but you can run with a crew of two. So if one runs an R M. So that's how they're getting away with running with Derek and Andrea, because Andrea's an R M. She can't, she cannot run with Derek and an EMT, but she can run with her and Derek. So she's getting away with it legally by doing that. So she is legal. My concern is, and this is what Doug said, like this time, they was out on some very dangerous roads to transport people. He says, "What if they're on the scene and something happens to one of them?" They have no-
No backup?
We have, I mean, there is no backup. You know, they were bringing people out on, on an ATV this time.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's how they could get them to a main road to get to the ambulance.
That would happen in out in the county too.
Yes, yes.
Happen anywhere.
And that's what, yes, that's, that's what happened out in the county too. Medic one was staged and would be there, but someone fire-pull and went, ran in and brought them out to there. You know, they get an EMT or a medic, paramedic in with them, but then they came out on an ATV. So there's a, there's a- So there's a, there's a moral responsibility for me to make sure that the city, the city is covered. You know, number one, I think we have a very high liability by just letting two people run ninety six hours straight. I, I mean, I think that's horrible. And that's not the first time this has happened. Andrea and Derek's done that one other time when she couldn't get, and this was before I was mayor, when she couldn't get coverage during COVID. No one would run because I was afraid they would get COVID. So her and Derek ran for almost a week straight. Just the two of them.
So it, it seems to me that, is it, is it time for Andrea and Derek to retire and we hire somebody?
Well, that's, that's something that the council.
For the safety of the city?
Yeah, that's something the council needs to give the direction on.
I've had this conversation.
Can I just intervene? We're just like, if you want to talk about personnel matters, I think we have to go off the, off the recording. So I don't, I'm not telling you that we have to, but if that's your intention, let's just, maybe you should announce it and make a motion.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that we're all clear about it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, since we're going to discuss EMS personnel, we're going to go off record.